Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, March 12th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. We all now have an invocation by B. Evans.
I can say it, Chaplain B. Evans.
Yes, thank you.
Let's pray. Father, we are so grateful that we can still meet openly at meetings. We can pray. We're free, Lord, and we thank you for that, that you continue to keep your hands on this wonderful United States of America. But tonight, Lord, we thank you that we have a city. Whether we live here permanently or whether we're just moving through, it's the most beautiful place that you've placed us. We are so grateful. We thank you, Father, that we have a council who volunteers just to keep us moving forward, Lord God, with all the right decisions. And Father, I know that their yes is yes and their no is no, so we thank you for it. We ask you to bless this meeting tonight, Father, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
We will now be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Chloe Fitch, representing the CTE.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Chloe, if you'd like to share a little bit about the CTE organization?
CTE has really helped me and a lot of students like me to develop many skills, including communication and perseverance and many other things that I can take into my life after high school.
Excellent. And you're in the journalism pathway you were sharing?
Yes.
And CTE is the Career and Technical Education Program that's run through our high school and has a variety of different pathways. So, well, thank you for being here today and sharing with us.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is our roll call.
Councilmembers Cal Sheehy?
Here.
David Lane?
Here.
Jenny Koch?
Here.
Gordon Groth?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Donna McCoy?
Here.
Jim Dolan?
Here.
The next item on the agenda is the Call to the Public. This is where citizens wishing to address the City Council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city can comment to the council. Comments must be limited to five minutes or less. There will be a light indicator box on the podium. Green means go, yellow means you'll have one minute, and red means the five minutes is up. If you are here and the item that you want to speak on is on one of the public hearings, we encourage you to wait till that area so we can have a two-way conversation. During Call to the Public, the council will be able to listen intently, but we won't be able to respond, but we could direct staff. So with that being said, would anyone like to address the council at the Call to the Public? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the Call to the Public. Next item is the Consent Agenda.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
The next item on the agenda is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. First item is 7.1, the Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Second Quarter Contracted Service Agency Reports. I believe those were just for our review. Does any councilmember have any questions from what we reviewed in our packet? All right, moving on to 7.2, announced vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are a number of vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Board, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular pilot member, one alternate non-pilot member. Board of Adjustment, two regular members, two, I'm sorry, three alternate members. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member. Citizens interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website.
Thank you. And 7.3 is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Knutson?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'd like to start off tonight's manager's report with a congratulations to Cassandra Klow. She's our Senior Budget Analyst in the Administrative Services Department, and she recently passed her final exam to become a Certified Public Accountant. Though certification is not required for her current position, she's devoted much of her free time in the last few years studying for this very difficult exam. The city would like to congratulate her on her significant accomplishment in her finance Thanks goes out to the Lake Havasu High School Student Council for painting on the walls at the Aquatic Center for their day of service. They did a great job displaying the rules for the water slide in a positive and very creative way. Congratulations goes out to Eagle Scout Lance Yurk for completing his Eagle Scout project. His project focused on new signage in the Bridgewater Channel, displaying maps with location markers to assist first responders when communicating with people who may be in danger or in need of assistance. The signs are now up, and they look great. Students working against tobacco, otherwise known as SWAT, met with Mayor Sheehy last week to learn more about communicating with elected officials and advocating for a better community. At a future City Council meeting, SWAT will lead the Pledge of Allegiance and introduce the club and themselves to the rest of the City Council. Mayor Sheehy, Vice Mayor David Lane, and myself, we're joined by representatives from the Havasu Air Center when we welcomed and thanked the proud members of the Royal Canadian Air Force. We are grateful to host their training activities for the last few weeks, and we hope for a continued positive relationship with the fine men and women protecting Canada and supporting our armed services. The public is invited to an open house to discuss the upcoming Swanson Avenue Reconstruction Project. That's going to be on March 20th, Wednesday, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the evening, and that'll be at the Aquatic Center located at 100 Park Avenue. This will be an opportunity for the public to meet with City, ADOT, and MPO staff and get more information about the road construction project that's going to be along Swanson Avenue between Acoma Boulevard and Smoke Tree Avenue. Improvements associated with the project include the complete reconstruction of the road, a multi-use path on the south side, and a bike lane on the north side of the roadway. This change will also eliminate the ability for parallel parking along this corridor. Ninety-four point three percent of the project is funded through federal aid funds, and it's, the project will be managed by ADOT. The project is expected to take approximately four months to complete, and construction is expected to begin in early April. The Lake Havasu City Municipal Airport invites the public to a public informational workshop. It'll take place at the airport terminal, and it'll be on March 28th at 5:30 PM. Representatives with our consultant, Kaufman and Associates, Kaufman and Associates, will be soliciting feedback from the public and providing an update on the latest news regarding the airport master plan. So we're asking the public to please join us and share your vision for the airport. Effective now through April 30th, the Mojave County Housing Authority is accepting applications Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. It's for the Section 8 Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, and in Lake Havasu City, location is at 2001 College Drive, Suite 94. The Mojave County Housing Authority is accepting applications from households with incomes that do not exceed 50% of the area median income in Mojave County, as established by HUD. Those that would like some more information can contact the Lake Havasu office at (928) And last slide, finally, we'd like to honor our Vietnam veterans with an open invitation to all service members and veterans to attend the Vietnam Veterans Breakfast. That's going to be on Friday, March 29th. It'll be from 8:30 AM to 10:30 AM, and it's going to be at the Lennon Bridge Resort Convention Center, which is located at 1477 Queens Bay. The doors are going to open that morning at 8:30. There'll be a presentation of colors from the Marine Corps League, or excuse me, Corps League. Kickoff of the event is at 8:45 AM, and a free traditional breakfast for all service members and veterans will be served at 9:00 AM, and the breakfast is provided by the Lennon Bridge Resort. This is a city event produced by a committee of various veterans and veteran organizations. Lake Havasu City is a Vietnam War commemorative partner and has been since 2013. So, Mayor and Council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for the City Manager? All right, well, next item on the agenda are our public hearings. We'll start with item 8.1, Adopt Resolution Number 19-3286, Appointing Members to the Lake Havasu City Airport Advisory Board. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received two applications requesting consideration for appointment as a non-pilot alternate member to the Airport Advisory Board. The appointment is necessary to fill the expired term of one alternate non-pilot member with a term to expire June 30th, 2020. Applications were provided to in the packet, and I believe, I know one is in the audience, and I believe the other one may also be in the audience, but I'll let them come up and do a brief presentation to answer any questions.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so we do have two applicants, and we have one position this evening. We have applicant Raleigh Ballis, and we also have applicant Ed Westerfeldt. Is Mr. Westerfeldt in the audience? All right, Mr. Ballis, did you want to address City Council and let us know why you would like to be on the Airport Advisory, and just come up to the podium?
So I don't know if there's a time limit, or, I don't know, I don't do much public speaking, but yeah, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Raleigh. I'm the owner of Mojave Realty here in town. A little bit of background on myself, my grandfather was a pilot, my dad is a pilot, and I hope to someday soon be a pilot myself. So when it came to my attention that there was an open board position for the Airport Advisory Board, I was very excited at the opportunity to potentially help manage, grow, and maintain an asset and resource that I one day want to use here in town. And so some of the skill sets that I think I could bring to the table, you know, we manage about half a million square feet of commercial real estate here in town that we're responsible for, making sure that it's well-maintained, occupied, and profitable, and that's a very big oversimplification of it, but I would take those principles and apply that to the decision-making process with regards to the board. And second, aviation is the family business. So my family successfully set up a large operation in Santa Monica Airport. We currently have a very successful operation at Mammoth Airport, which is growing very rapidly as well. And I, to myself, have maybe a unique advisory board that I can lean on, so when there's big decisions to be made, issues, opportunities, I can lean on that resource to maybe help provide perspective, problem-solving, and opportunities so that the board is confident that they see the whole picture and all the options presented to them, so they can feel confident in their decision moving forward. So that's me in a nutshell. I don't know if there's questions or what's next, but...
Do any members of the council have any questions? Councilmember McCoy?
Yes. How long have you lived in our city?
One year and one month.
One year and one month. And are your father, grandfather, do they reside here, or are they still in Southern California?
Unfortunately, my grandfather passed away in a helicopter accident when I was one, so I, you know, he met me. I didn't have a chance to meet him, but my father does, yes. He does reside, full-time resident here. That's actually how I came to meet, you know, Mike Dagan, and therefore, you know, moved my family out here, like so many have, and we love it so far. Everyone we've met is just, you know, open arms, everyone's just so nice. So we're very happy, and this is our first step, trying to help give back to the community in a positive and useful way.
Excellent. Any other questions from any members of the council? All right, well, thank you for the presentation. And just to confirm, Mr. Westerfeldt is not in the audience? All right, this is a public hearing. We will open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 19-3286, Appointing Raleigh Ballis as an alternate non-pilot member to the Airport Advisory Board with a term ending on June 30th, 2020.
We do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you for volunteering to be on the commission. Our next item is 8.2, Adopt Resolution Number 19-3288, Approving Affiliation Agreement with Arizona State University for Student Educational Experiences. Ms. Gary?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a resolution to approve the affiliation agreement with ASU. This agreement will provide the framework to allow ASU and the city to work together to provide educational opportunities within the city. We have a couple departments right now that are interested in implementing such a program. Police Department is one of them, and I know they've been working with ASU to put this forward, and that's kind of where this affiliation agreement came from. There's also some interest in the Community Investment Department as far as project management. This agreement sets forth just the general parameters and requirements of the program, and then each individual program will have a separate informal addendum to the agreement, meaning that it won't necessarily come to council for approval, but it will go through approval process with the city, with the city manager signing off on the program. And we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Gary? All right, this is a public hearing. Well, does anyone want to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 19-3288, Approving Affiliation Agreement with the Arizona Board of Regents for and on behalf of Arizona State University for Student Educational Experiences.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.3, Approve Amendment Number Two to the Services Agreement with Cherry Road Technologies, Inc., for Implementation Services for the Oracle Fusion Enterprise Resource Planning System. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. For the record, Jill Olson, Admin Services Director. The item before you tonight is Amendment Number Two with Cherry Road Technologies. They are the company that is helping us implement the new ERP system. There are several modules associated with that, and the contract, the original contract made the assumption that the, our current IT staff would be able to handle all of the conversions and interfaces that are required, and we just don't have the depth of staff to do that, and to do that, plus do their daily jobs. We've got one programmer who has, spends probably 100% of his time on this project, probably more since he's working a lot, not just 40 hours a week. So we have requested this estimate from Cherry Road so that we get some technical assistance in completing the conversions and the interfaces with a go-live date of July 1st. And so with that, I'll answer any additional questions you might have.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Olson?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Groth?
Are you, do we have any customizations that are going to be, need to be made specifically for, you know, using like Flex SQL or something like that? Is that what you're talking about when you're talking about the programming? We have to tweak a few of the interfaces to interface the data appropriately with our backend systems?
With the interfaces, the programming needs to be done that allows our software to talk to the other third-party software. So it's just the programming that's needed for that communication between the software packages, and then the conversions are to actually convert our existing information on the financial and human resources personnel side, convert that information into the format that's needed to be usable in the new program, the Oracle Fusion product.
Any additional questions for Ms. Olson? I have one question for you. Are we confident that this will get us to where we need to go? We've had a few pushback dates on where we're going. Do we think this will solve that problem for us?
We believe this will solve the problem. I'm committed to not having to return to ask you for any more money for this project.
Thank you.
And we, staff wants to go live July 1st more than anyone, I believe.
Okay.
We're committed to that.
And working with the vendor, with Cherry Road Technologies, they also are willing to commit to get this done?
Absolutely. They're anxious because they have other projects that they're waiting to assign their people to work on, and so they want to go ahead and finish up our project in a successful manner so that they can actually move on and help some of their other clients who are needing the same assistance.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Does anyone want to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember McCoy?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to approve Amendment Number Two to the Service Agreement between Lake Havasu City and Cherry Road Technologies, Inc.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
May I just offer a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would say that sometimes the programming skills that are required to successfully complete something like this can be somewhat obscure and/or very taxing on our own staff, so it's not incumbent that we should have had all these skills necessarily in the bucket and ready to go. And I think it's, I think it's absolutely important to support the finishing of the deployment of these modules by supporting this, and it's not a reflection on our IT department, they're doing a great job. It's just that there's some very specific knowledge here. So sort of like the difference between being a physician and, you know, being a cardiovascular surgeon, that's a very specific thing. So that's the piece that they have to put together, and it's probably better that we have those people do that.
All right, any additional comments? Where we have a motion and a second, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Next item is 8.4, Award Bid for Fiscal Year 2018-19 Chip Seal Program to Chola Pavement Maintenance, Inc. Mr. Prosky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Before you is the annual chip seal bid for 2018-19. There were, we received three bids this year, and Cholo Pavement Maintenance Incorporated was lowest. I do have a couple slides for you. Okay, the first slide just shows the map. The red is the base bid, and the alternates are in green, purple, and pink, I believe. We're recommending that the council award the base bid and all three alternates this The next slide shows since 2012, we've chip sealed over 5.9 million square yards, or 68% of our streets are city. We also, this year, are doing additional fog seal contract, and we are doing additional microseal as soon as those quotes come back, which should be this week. We'll know exactly how much those are. For all the chip seal and all the treatments we've done, our current PCI rating, which is our pavement condition index, is a 75, with zero being the worst, 100 the best. I think 75, we're doing pretty good. This next slide just shows the comparison if we chip sealed and if we slurry sealed. You can see at chip seal, it's coming in at $1.85 a square yard this year. We're going to do approximately 28 miles. The expected life of the chip seals, eight to 10 years, and it's a cost of 1.1 million dollars. If we took that same amount of square yards, same amount of miles, and we slurried, the cost is 350 a square foot for 2.1 million. And with that, it's recommended to fog seal, and every three years minimum, so that puts a dollar more square yard in. So for that total that we're doing in chip seal this year, for, if we did it in slurry, would be 3.3 million for the program. So you can see that for the chip seal, it's the most cost-effective treatment that we're getting for our streets. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, so you proved it again. I've been on council, I've always wanted this not to be the right answer, that chip seal was the most cost-effective, but you get me every year.
Unfortunately, it is.
Yeah, every year you get me. So do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Prosky?
If I may? I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember...
And it's really for the people in the audience and the people at home, because every year you, you know, give us some really cool information, some good answers, but what is fog seal?
Fog seal is just a water-based oil that is sprayed on the street and left to dry. It's like a emulsified oil that's got some plastic polymers in it, and it dries, it just seals the street. It's good for about two to three years in our weather.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Lane?
I do. It's more of a statement than a question. Yeah, I think everybody up here hates chip sealing. I know I hate chip sealing. I hate it with a passion. We have a lot of very expensive paint jobs on hot rods in this town, and windshields, and kids on bicycles, and the chip sealing adds all kinds of problems. With that said, with part of our budget that goes towards roadways, I believe, the city manager can correct me if I'm wrong, is about $5 million a year, and that includes our personnel and the equipment and the products that we put on the road, and so spending over $3 million with a fog seal, where we can do it for $1 million, trying to make everybody's dollar go farther without raising any taxes. So that's the reason we do the chip sealing, but we also, if I am correct, and you can, my question is, we're going to be doing some other products that we're going to try, maybe around the schools?
Correct.
Instead of chip sealing, spend a little bit of extra money, see if those products work in Lake Havasu for a good dollar? Can you tell me about maybe what those products are?
It's more or less a microseal, which is kind of a step up from a slurry seal. It's got better product, it's better oil, it's better aggregate that's mixed in with the product, and it lasts about the same. There's still maintenance that goes with that, so, you know, even though it looks nice when it goes down, there's still maintenance every couple years that goes with that.
And it may have been in one of your slides, but it's $1.85 roughly for the chip seal, and how much was it for that other product?
To go to slurry, I believe, it was...
350 for the slurry, but the micro?
Micro, we have not received those quotes back yet.
Oh, so we don't, we just know it's going to be more?
It's going to be more.
A lot more?
It's going to be more than slurry. I can go to that.
But, and we're just doing that on a limited basis to see how well it works?
Correct. We always try to look for the best product, best, I hate to use the term, more bang for a buck. I mean, we're trying to do what's best for our citizens, what's best for our streets to make it last, and...
We have issues sometimes with the chip sealing. Mr. Dolan was on the radio earlier today and spoke about kids riding their bicycles on the chip sealing areas and how dangerous that can be, so we're going to be doing this in a school zone?
There are, I believe there are some streets around the school areas that will be chipped.
Okay, well, let's hope some of these bids and things start going down so we can get away from chip sealing, because...
We are...
Yeah, that'll get more dollars from the federal government.
I wish we could. I wish we could get more funding. One thing we do also is, most cities only sweep twice after a chip seal. We actually spend a little bit extra, and we sweep three times, just so we can get as much rock off as we can. So we are doing that to help.
Thank you. Councilmember McCoy?
Yes. Ken, I don't, I'm not sure where I heard this, but I think it was either last year or maybe the year before, that we put down the chip seal, but we had an early heat wave that came in and kind of made it not be as effective.
Actually, it was the opposite. It was actually a cold morning...
Oh, okay.
...that we had, and the contractor tried to help it by the, the temperature of the asphalt was right at 55, five degrees, I believe, and he tried to adjust his flow rate of the oil to get more oil, but then it got hot in the afternoon, so it did the exact opposite. So we, this year, we're going to be on top of that, a little bit, with a little more staff to make sure he's doing it correctly.
Right, I just remember hearing that and just wanted to make sure I wasn't hearing things.
Yeah, there was a few certain streets that got, yeah, that was, yeah.
That was a great question. We got a lot of feedback from residents, so, yeah, thank you for addressing that. And for those watching at home, the council packets are all online, and you'll be able to see all of the roads that are going to be... to see all of the roads that are going to be impacted with the chip seal program, if you want to take a look at that. Do any other members of the council have any questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Lane.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to award the bid for the base bid and alternates one, two, and three for fiscal year 2018-19 Chip Seal Program to Chola Pavement Maintenance, Inc., for $1,117,501.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I believe we're ready to vote. Thank you. Our next stop public hearing is item 8.5, Introduce Ordinance Number 19-1214, Amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 2.04, City Administration and City Council Regarding Meetings, Future Agenda Items, Requests, Call to the Public, Ordinances, and Boards and Commissions. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, at the city council planning session in January, staff sought direction from the council regarding several processes, including future agenda items, council requests, and public requests, call to the public, boards, and commissions. The proposed ordinance before you makes the following changes necessary to carry out the direction that was received from city council, along with a couple other proposed revisions. I'd be happy to go over them that are in your packet to answer any questions that you have. We can kind of go through them one by one, if you'd like, what those are.
I think if we just give a brief overview one by one, so the public can see what we're reading or hear what we're reading.
Okay. So the first one is revising 2.04.090 special meetings and work sessions, executive sessions, to allow the council in accordance with 2.04.280, or the city manager or city attorney for executive sessions to schedule a meeting. The second is revising 2.04.250 to remove future agenda items from the order of business and replace with future discussion items. The third is revising 2.04.280 to include that any member of the council may request that an item be placed on the agenda for consideration, discussion, and/or legal action by... The first is making a motion and receiving a second, no vote necessary, during the future discussion items, portion of a city council meeting, and then the requesting council member will work with the city manager to determine the best course of action for handling the request. The second would be submitting a written request to the mayor prior to the deadline for the specified agenda, and the mayor will work with the council members, and the city manager determine the best course of action for handling that request. If it's determined that the request should be placed on a future agenda, the city manager will obtain the necessary information and materials for placement, and then the mayor may submit items for placement on an agenda by providing written notice to all council members. We'll work with the city manager to obtain the necessary documentation for placement. The fourth is revising 2.04.290 to clarify for public requests that a formal written request must be submitted to the city clerk or the city council, and then it's reviewed by the city manager or designee to research the request and determine if it should be handled administratively or require city council action. It also clarifies in that same section that meeting agenda is defined as the next available regular meeting agenda. The fifth is revising 2.04.500 to clarify how members of the public are to address the council during a call to the public, and sets that call to the public to three minutes unless further time is granted by the city council. Number six, revising 2.04.520 to correct the enacting clause of all ordinances. Number seven was removing 2.04.600 council requests for ordinances or resolutions in its entirety, as it's covered under council requests. And the last is amending 2.04.601 general to add a new subsection F regarding board requests.
Thank you for the summary. So a little bit of information about, we addressed this first at the council planning session in January, and the reason why is that was the first opportunity that this council that was elected had the opportunity to sit down and have discussions about things. And at that point, we were cleaning up codes and wanted to make it easier for council members to have an opportunity to get things on the agenda and have a clear pathway for all of our council members to have that. Prior to this, it actually would be easier for a citizen to get something on the agenda than it would be for council members potentially, and this clears some of those things up. The first comment is, in the call to the public, we would be reducing the time from five minutes to three minutes. That would be the call to the public at the meeting. The city staff did a lot of research, and this, three minutes is, the majority of towns in Arizona use three minutes. If you recall at the beginning of this meeting, I had said that is where you can address the council on any topic within our jurisdiction, but we can't, we can't have a two-way conversation. So this would allow council, or citizens to address the city council in a concise manner, let us know what's on your mind and what it is that we can address for you, but get it into an item where we actually can have a two-way conversation. It still will be five minutes for all of our public hearings. So all of the public hearings that we've opened up this evening would still be a five-minute time limit. And again, at all of these points, the mayor and council can extend some additional times for that. So just some clarifications on a couple of points that we've been hearing a little bit about, and once people understand it, it seems to make sense to them. So with that being said, do any members of the council have any comments, questions? Or does it, it's aligned with what we talked about at the planning session in January? Okay. All right. If there's no comments, then I will open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to introduce ordinance number 19-1214, amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 2.04, Administration and City Council Regarding Meetings, Future Agenda Items, Requests, Call to the Public, Ordinances, and Board and Commissions. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Koch and a second by Councilmember McCoy. Is there any additional comments from council? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. The next public hearing is item 8.6, Introduce Ordinance Number 19-1215, amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 11.06, Parks and Recreation Regarding Student Member Board Requests and Community Services to Parks and Recreation. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, with the proposed changes for the item before you with 2.04, staff reviewed the Chapter 11.06, Parks and Recreation, and needed to make some amendments to align with the new section 2.04.610 general relating to board requests. And with that change are also a few other cleanup items that were addressed. So the first one is updating community service department and changing that to Parks and Recreation throughout the chapter. The second one is removing 11.06.021, Appointment of Student Body Member in its entirety. Student body members are handled the same way with the appointment process as all other members, and so we've removed that section. And number three is removing 11.06.07083 regarding requests for agenda items, which is now covered under 2.04.610. That was just announced at the last item regarding board requests and how members of the board would put a request through for an agenda item.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams? So this is a companion item that just cleans up the language from the item we just talked about that flows into this section, so... All right, if there's no questions or comments, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to introduce ordinance number 19-1215, amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 11-06, Parks and Recreation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. All right, the next item is Current Events, item nine. Do we have any council committee reports? All right, we did have Mojave County Water Authority meeting today. The councilmember Groth and myself attended, along with Ms. Gary from our city attorney's office, and probably the point to mention is that it looks like that we won't be considered for drought this year at the levels of Lake Mead, which was positive news, but it's still, it's still early, so we'll see, but this rain's been helpful for us. So, and the snowpack in Colorado is also looking very strong. So those are very positive things for water and water in our region. Any other council committee reports? All right, number 10 on our agenda is a call to the public. This will be our final call to the public this evening. Would anyone like to address the city council and the call to the public? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Item 11 is future meetings. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, March 26th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. It's a regular meeting. On Tuesday, April 9th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m., we have a regular meeting. Again, Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, at 6:00 p.m., we have a regular meeting. And then Thursday, April 25th, at 9:00 a.m., is our budget and our CIP overview work session. And that again will be our, on Thursday morning, April 25th, at 9:00 a.m. Item 12, any future agenda items? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, we have a motion and a second. Thank you. Have a good evening.